I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, I'll move it over to you.
Thank you. Please excuse me tonight as I try to navigate between spreadsheets and things like that with this keyboard. I'm not, I don't use this technology very often, so. And I'm becoming to be out of the age range of which you know how to use technology, unfortunately. I don't, I can't even get this to, okay, there we go. All right, so tonight, we have a pretty jam-packed work session of information. At the last meeting, we did not have our state aid proposal from the governor yet. We do have that now, so we'll be reviewing that. We have our tax levy cap calculation, which was submitted to the state a couple of weeks ago. It's due by March 1st, so we'll review that step by step. And then we will discuss staffing requests for the 23, 24 school year, along with the full instructional portion of the draft budget, where we're at right at this point. So I will jump right into it. I think you have this in your packet, if it's hard for you to see. So we received the governor's state aid proposal to education figures directly as they relate to Lancaster the first week of February. These are still estimates. They are not final until the state's budget is finalized and passed, which is typically the last week of March, first week of April. So we'll give you an update then. But this is where we are at right now. So the state aid run for Lancaster is what we show you every year. The top half is our current year, 22, 23 actual figures. And then the bottom half are the estimated aid amounts based on the governor's budget. So as usual, we have some changes to the governor's estimate based on what we know better at this time. So what the governor's run does is take figures from data that we report in the fall. So it's based on November numbers. And in areas such as transportation, BOCs, building aid, where they're expense-based, we know better based on what we're going to spend this year than the November 15 database numbers may, may reflect. So we do this every year, and when we actually look at what we budgeted to what we actually get, we're usually much closer to my estimates than we are the actual state estimates that come out in this.
And Ms. Phillips, I just, I want to stop there and thank you for that. Because every, every year, you know, we do this, we go through this budget. And I'm really proud that we have that ability to analyze that data, know where we're really going to be, and not just use those numbers.
Though, just using those numbers could go two ways. You could either get more than those numbers said, and so then you have some excess revenue that you didn't plan on. But most of the time, they're lower numbers than what the runs say, so you would end up in a budget shortfall in those situations. So while it's complicated to explain sometimes, it really is just a better way to, to look at this on our end. So our actual aid for the 22, 23 school year is $45.2 million. And for the governor's proposal for next year, I'm estimating $50.2 million. So $5 million increase in state aid to Lancaster for next school year. So if you see on there, I crossed a couple of numbers off and wrote federal. That is our UPK grant money that is not part of our general fund budget, either on the revenue side or the expenditure side. We account for it in a different fund. It's not part of the budget that's voted on, so I just subtract those out because it's not part of what we would budget for. On the rev, or on the foundation aid side, a couple of years ago, there was a commitment to fully funded, fully funded foundation aid in the next couple of years. Lancaster was one of the districts that was probably fir, one of the furthest districts from funding to the actual formula, nine-page formula of data. So we were at about 75%. So if you recall, in '21, '22, and this year, we, we received significant amounts in our foundation aid. And then that continues for '23, '24. And at that point, we will be considered fully funded. That does not come without some quirks, though, some obligations. If you could see down at the bottom, the last number where the red arrow is, there is a high-impact tutoring set aside. So with our $4.2 million increase in foundation aid, we will be required, if this passes as part of the final budget, to set aside $400,000 to use in '23, '24 to provide high-impact tutoring to students. It cannot be used towards existing staff. We can't, you know, just pay an existing reading teacher out of it. It would be for an increase in staff level during the school day or for, you know, before and after-school programs that provide tutoring. And that would be aimed at grades three through eight. And we would have to come up with a plan to identify which students should receive that tutoring, hire either someone during the school day or existing teachers to, you know, provide additional hours after the school day to provide that tutoring. That's about all we know about it at this point. We will obviously worry about it more when we know that it is actually passed in the budget.
Jamie, let me, let me ask a question there. So this is new for this year, right?
This, this would be new for next year, yes.
Yeah, new for next year. And the proportion of funds that Lancaster might receive, do you have an idea of what that is? Is it more based on need or?
It would be part of the foundation aid that we are receiving. So it's a percentage of your foundation aid. And it's only applicable to districts who are receiving a certain percent increase or higher in foundation aid. So if someone is not receiving more than 10% in a foundation aid increase, then they will not be required to spend the money in that way. If you recall, this year, because we were receiving a 10% increase in foundation aid, we had to put together a plan that showed how we were going to spend it. So that requirement would still be in effect, but then we would also have to carve out $400,000 of our $32 million in foundation aid to put towards the tutoring.
Got it. Thank you.
We don't know if it's a use it or lose it situation. We don't know what the reporting's going to look like or anything like that. Like I said, that's a worry for when we know what it's actually, that it's actually going to be put in place. So aside from our foundation aid, that's obviously the largest increase in state aid that we're receiving. Everything else is remaining right around our normal amounts. BOCs, access cost aid, hardware, software and technology, library aid, transportation aid, building aid. Those aids are all expense-based. So it's money that we've spent this year, and then the aid flows for next year. So that's how we're in a situation for some of these that we know better. We're going to know what we're spending better than the state would at this point for this, this current school year that drives that aid. So as always, our transportation aid is overstated by about $1.5 million. So in our initial budget, we are budgeting for what we think we actually will receive versus what the governor's run said. The major difference, along with foundation aid, is the increase in building aid that we're expecting. So on our building projects, we have certain timeframes to submit reporting. When a phase at a school wraps up, our, we have to submit our final cost reports either by December 31 of a given year or June 30 of a given year. And if they are submitted by those deadlines, that starts the aid flow for the following year. So being that this database was pulled on November 15, it does not include early, an early start aid permission that we got for our middle school building project, and also does not include the high school in Court Street construction that we just wrapped, that we did predominantly this past summer, and that we're, will be filing the reports by June 30. So that's the reason for the recalculation of that number. So all in all, at this point, we're estimating a $50.2 million state aid package. So that is $5 million more than we're, that we're, than we're currently receiving. And when we look at what we budgeted this year versus what I'm able to initially budget for next year based on this proposal, that's an additional $5.3 million in state aid. Does anybody have any state aid questions? Other than the foundation aid phase-in and that little, that set aside for the high-impact tutoring, the proposal for education is pretty quiet. A lot of times, we've seen that education, aid to education has come under attack. There's, you know, proposals to change aid formulas in various areas and things like that, and it's actually pretty sleepy this year. So we will move on to the tax levy limit calculation. So this is, in a sense, what you would call the 2% tax cap. But every year, we're required to do this calculation and submit it by March 1st. I want to be clear that at this point, this is just the calculation of the maximum amount that we would be able to increase the tax levy. It is not by any means what the final tax levy is going to end up being at this point. So we will walk through those factors. So the formula is, I guess, complicated in the sense that it's not just a 2% increase like some people believe. We take the prior year's levy, and then we apply a tax-based growth factor, which is provided by New York State each year and in specific to the community based on the growth within the school district's community. We then also apply the allowable levy growth factor. This is where the 2% comes from. It is, allows our levy to grow by the Consumer Price Index, but a maximum of 2%, whatever's the lowest. So this year, with it being about 8%, we're, we're actually using the 2% for factor this year. We're also allowed to carry up to 1.5% over of, from the previous year if we did not levy that amount, which we did not. So we have about $900,000 of carryover from the prior year. And then there are some add-ins and some exclusions. We factor in the pilots that we receive, payments that, payments and lieu of taxes that we received this year. And then we estimate what we're expecting to receive next year. There's two pension system exclusions, which for this coming year, both of those exclusions are zero because the rate changes do not meet the, the level, I think it's 2%. If the rates change more than 2%, then we're allowed to exclude them. That is not the intentions this year, or that is not what they've estimated for this year. And then we have the capital exclusion, which takes a bunch of our capital expenses for the current year and for the following year, and determines whether we have an exclusion. Normally, we have zero exclusion, but on the expenditure side, we have a increase in debt. And on the revenue side, we have an increase in our building aid estimate. So we do have this year an exclusion of about $700,000 that we're able to factor in. So all in all, the bottom line, once we apply all of the factors and add-ins and exclusions, the maximum tax levy calculation for next year is $62.8 million, which is a $3.6 million increase over the current year's levy, and that equates to 6%. So I will reiterate again, that is not what our tax levy is going to be at this point. We're not at decision-making point, but this is the maximum that we could go to and still only need 50% plus one of the votes at the main budget vote. Anyone have any tax levy questions? All right, next up on the agenda is our staffing requests. So as part of the budget process, our buildings and departments are able to submit staffing requests with their other budget requests. And we review those to see, you know, what's necessary and then, you know, make adjustments within the draft budget accordingly. So we have professional staffing requests, and we have a support staff staffing request. So I'll kind of go through those today. This chart shows four positions that have been requested. One being a CSE chairperson. One, an elementary-level teacher for grades four through six based on enrollment. One is an AIS teacher to meet current needs. And then one is an ENL teacher. And at this point, it's a just-in-case. I think we'll probably talk about that a little later. It makes more sense when we're looking at the budget, I think, to talk about it, so. We...
Yeah, I think it's important to say also that there were other requests throughout the school district. And we go through a rigorous process and a lot of meetings and, and a process to whittle that down to the things that we need the most, or those individual departments or people feel that they need the most. And this is not a final recommendation, because I can't make a final recommendation to the board because I don't know the overall numbers. So at this point, we have individuals who are requesting these come and speak to the board and give their reasons and rationale for those when the time comes that we can see the whole budget in its totality and whatever else. Some of these might be excluded, some of these might be added, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, at this time, why don't we just go rate in order? And first up would be Mr. Armstrong.
We're good? Okay. So the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education process are like, like core to, core to our department, our special education department, and core to what Aaron and I do. And because we meet on children with families, with parents, with our staff, and we certainly, as you, as many of you know from reading my reports and otherwise, you know, we develop IEPs, update IEPs, and deal with a myriad of issues related to students that, that get special education services. So I got to say, I was thinking about this today after, I was joking around with Aaron about it actually earlier, after, what, 20-some years of chairing, almost 20 years of chairing CSE meetings, I still get a kick out of them, mostly. I did a bunch, I did several today and helped out. And it's, it's great because I get to see progress with, a lot of times with kids. You get to problem-solve with parents and staff, and we do a heck of a lot of great work to get kids where they, where they should be and where we want them to be. So, but what I would say is it's, it's labor-intensive. And, and some of the follow-up and the compliance issues that the state has us do here in New York State are pretty significant. And it keeps us, if you want to say in a general way, sort of being able to follow-up and do it well, and make sure you communicate with parents and staff, keeps us out of, I think, trouble, without getting to all that, what that means. But usually, trouble with state complaints or other legal process. We do a pretty good job at that. We're not perfect at it, but we, historically, we've done pretty well, which, which allows us to focus more of our attention on kids. So having said all that, it's, I've kind of come to this conclusion based upon just the sheer number of students we meet upon and the number of meetings we have that Aaron and I chair. And some of the follow-up time, needs that we have, we, I'm advocating for a dedicated teacher on special assignment. I don't, personally, I don't need another administrator, I don't think. And I don't think that's what we've discussed and proposed. I just wanted to clarify that. It's, it would be a teacher on special assignment of some kind is what I'm suggesting. And that person would, their primary responsibility would be to chair meetings that are probably, quite frankly, a little less, they wouldn't be like high-stakes meetings, they wouldn't be discipline-type manifestation meetings. If there was any issues that involved advocacy's or advocates or were sensitive with parents, then that's something certainly Aaron and I would continue to work on, and we still would do a lot of the meetings. But it's really about, I guess it's an economic term, opportunity cost. Like, if we could get, if Aaron and I can get freed up just a little bit, right, to do a, really a better job of managing some of our programs, some of the groups of people we work with, be it psychologists, speech, social workers, even getting in the buildings and also working on some of our plans for the multi, for CDEP, for example, multi-tiered systems of support, improving our reading instruction for all students. I mean, it, I think, I think it would, I think we could really do a better job of really managing overall just by freeing some of that time up. And I don't think truly with the right, if we hire the right person and train them, it's not going to impact our CSE process. We'll get a good person, and, and we'll continue because it is a crucial role that we serve, so.
And John, could you please just give the board, you know, some numbers and the number of students that serviced over the course of the last five years or so?
Yeah, it's, just look at my notes here. Probably gone from a little over, including school, or school age and preschool, from probably around since 16, 17, a little, about 1,000 to upwards of, heading towards about 1150 right now, over the past four or five years, we've gone up. Percentage-wise, we're still doing okay for a lot, partly because of how the state calculates that. But our, our percentage of students in our seven buildings that are identified has gone up to about, probably in the 17% to 18% range over the past few years. I hasten to add that that's, seems to be a pattern in the state, so it's not just Lancaster. But there's a lot of needs out there that we're addressing. So, meeting-wise, I think, I think we project, I can't remember, Aaron, if it's this year or next year, about, roughly about 1,650 or so CSE meetings that we, you know, because it's not just meeting when a child initially gets services, you have to meet on at least, each child at least one time a year for an annual review. An annual review, and then we do a lot of programs and follow-up reviews for students that are, that need extra support or things aren't going well. So we, we try to follow up as much as possible. Is that what you had in mind, Mike, or did you need something else?
No, that's great, if there's any questions on that one.
Could you, could you walk through, because you had said you're leaning more to a teacher on special assignment as opposed to an admin?
Yeah.
Walk through the thought process of the opportunity costs between the going to admin route versus the teacher on special assignment route? Because there's a cost difference, but there's also the ability for that admin to take on a wider range of opportunities which broaden out the scope of your team to be able to do more. So how do you value that?
Um, I'm trying to think. Honestly, Kevin, I, I put it in like this on the staffing request. I was, honestly, I was thinking more, as I stated, more of the TOSA approach. I see what you're saying, though, like if you, if you were to bring on an administrator, you could, like, things it could help with just off, this is just off the cuff, because I really wasn't thinking too much about having, you know, either another assistant or some other role. But it would be, they could do evaluations, they could, in that regard, from a staffing standpoint, that gives you some advantages. I could think of that coming to mind. And, and like, maybe have more, if you will, of a role or a positional authority when it comes to managing mandates or leading initiatives and things like that as opposed to, not that a TOSA, a teacher on special assignment would necessarily do that. So I could see some advantages. Quite frankly, I had, to be honest with you, I hadn't thought about it too much, so.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean, obviously, I, I think whether we are able to hire from internally or whether we end up going outside, we have to get somebody that has some, some, some good experience and knows the CSE process. That would be key regardless of whether it's a TOSA or an administrator, so. Because there's, this district, as, as Aaron's found out, it's, if there's a steep learning curve, right, with seven buildings and several thousand students and quite a diverse range of special ed programs that we deliver, so you want to get somebody in that you can, you can train up hopefully in a hurry, so.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. How about next one? Elementary teacher, four through six. That's a pretty easy one. It's just based on class size and a protected class size that Dr. Kupel produces. But AIS teacher, Karen?
We are asking for an additional math specialist, four or six. But that math specialist actually gives us a little more bang for our buck than just math. Currently, we have one math specialist at Williams Street, and then one of our reading specialists, halftime, is doing math groups. So she's, and she's good at it, don't get me wrong. She's doing her best, and she's helping kids along. But that's obviously not her specialty, and that's taking her away from doing her work with, with students around reading. So in hiring a math specialist, we could put Michelle, who is the, that math, or the reading specialist, back to doing reading full-time, and then have a math specialist working with our students on math. The reason that we're asking for this is because we do universal screeners with our students. And based on the screeners, and there are multiple measures for both ELA and math, based on the screeners, we've found that we are underservicing about 7% of our students who should be served in math in fourth grade, 13% in fifth grade, and 7% in sixth grade. And we have similar numbers in ELA of students who should be getting services or should be getting more services in AIS than they are. So adding that additional math specialist would help us make up the math and would allow Michelle go back to teaching reading and servicing those students that aren't getting what, all the attention that we'd like to give them there.
Any questions on that one? And then finally, ENL teacher.
All right, ENL, excuse me, ENL teacher. So a little bit of a history first, going back, you know, certainly years ago, we used BOCs exclusively to provide ENL services for English language learners. That's when we had a small handful of English language learners, you know, two, threes or so. About five or six years ago, we went to four Lancaster ENL teachers with one BOCs person to support. And we had always budgeted more because it's a transient population that, as we've known, has grown over the last decade substantially. Our numbers do continue to grow. The last couple of years, through utilizing BOCs, they're moving away from that service in part, and there's been some difficulty when we've needed to find some, some additional support. So once again this year, and we've had the largest single increase this year that we've had since I've certainly been in the district, we added 21 students, English language learners, just this year alone. Certainly lost a few, but we've added 21. And what we're looking to do, in total right now, we have 76 students who receive English language learner services. So it's the highest that we've certainly ever been as a district. This provides us to, and you'll see it later on in the presentation, provides us to, provides us the opportunity to move really from the budget line of utilizing BOCs to putting it in our budget line going forward for the, if the need so arises to add.
Yep. So during the budget presentation, you'll just see a large decrease in the BOCs service in the ENL budget code and a slight increase in the salary. So the decrease more than offsets the increase. And this is not a definite higher. This is just a putting in the position and having it budgeted for salaries as we won't have that BOCs service to fall back on if, if our numbers increase this spring or over the summer or even during the school, next, school year next year.
The next part here is Schedule D and E requests. Ms. Phillips and Dr. Kupel sort of chair that committee. And there's a whole process connecting the LCTA collective bargaining agreement. If you wish. The next part here is Schedule D and E requests. Ms. Phillips and Dr. Kupel sort of chair that committee, and there's a whole process connecting the LCTA collective bargaining agreement. If you wouldn't mind just quickly explaining that for anyone that may be listening in the snow, and then going through them.
Sure. Contractually, in the LCTA contract, there is a process that teachers, coaches, anyone that's performing any of these extracurricular duties with clubs or sports teams where they're able to request a change in their salary level based on the contractual language, or add, a request to be added to the salary schedule for the extracurriculars. And then every January, there's a committee of four LCTA members and four district representatives that review all of those requests and make a decision as a group on whether they should move on to the superintendent into the Board of Education, or whether the level that maybe is being requested should be the one that's granted, or maybe a different level. It's a, you know, pretty harmonious conversation. We're all usually very much on the same page with how it works. So what we have on here are the requests that had, that were approved by the committee this winter, this past January, to recommend to the superintendent and the Board of Education. So the first four here are actually not part of the Schedule D process, they are new athletic team requests. So varsity flag football for girls, and then also unified bowling. As you know, we have the unified basketball team, and several districts have been participating in the bowling for a couple of years. So that would add those two new athletic opportunities for our students. Request number five through nineteen are a result of the Schedule D committee's recommendation. So number five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven are new clubs or new coaching positions to be added to the Schedule D contractual list. For the clubs, they are all clubs that over the last four, probably one of them, I think, is four or five years, a couple of them are four or five years old, and then some of the other ones are just over a year old. They're all clubs that the Board of Education approved, being created and, and starting up. So what they have to do is operate for a year before, before they're able to request to be added to the Schedule D list. And then the remaining number twelve through nineteen are existing clubs and existing things that have been on the Schedule D list at a certain level, and they have requested level changes, and these are the level changes that the committee recommends for them. And then to round off this list, number twenty, oh, I'm sorry, Science Honor Society falls with the Schedule D stuff, number twenty-one is the addition of a department chair for the ENL department. And that will be in addition to Schedule E, which also has all of our other department chairs, our academy coordinators, thank you. And all of these amounts are estimated because the teacher's contract will be under, is under negotiations for next year, so these amounts are all subject to change just slightly based on the results of those negotiations.
Andy, could you just jump in there right there? I think it's important to explain to the board the potential department chair position.
Sure. I think as this department, and we just alluded or talked about, can use to grow, I think having somebody as the point person is hugely beneficial for our students and for our faculty and administration as the, the main point of contact. In other departments, especially those that span multiple buildings, those department chairs are hugely important in terms of scheduling, in terms of, you know, working with teachers and training some of the new teachers, or, or working with them as they're into our system, and just a variety of, of key quasi-administrative roles that they take on in their departments.
Yeah, I think it's important to just bring up again, in two thousand and six, we had seven ENL students, you know, so there wasn't a need for, let alone a full-time teacher, and now we have, how many, six?
We have five teachers and then depending.
Potentially six. So over all seven buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So times change and the community's changing, and this would be, you know, something that we need to, you know, entertain.
I would just love to highlight here how many things that Lancaster offers our, our students. To see some of these new prospective ones, you know, it's, it's great to see. I love to see the, the flag football for the girls and the unified bowling that just, you know, hits you right in the heart. I can't wait to watch that if it, if it comes to fruition. Hopefully it does to this budget, but thank you all for all the work that you do, making sure that the kiddos get these types of activities, because, you know, these things are so important to students, you know. We don't know what every student comes with, and these, these types of things really help particular students, and I can't thank you enough.
All right, so we'll switch over. We have, on the non-instructional staffing, we have one request. So, oh boy, am I going to be able to do this? Hey, okay. So that is the microcomputer support specialist, and I think we're going to turn that over to Eric and Michelle to discuss.
I can just start real quick. You've heard proposals from Karen, from John, that really talk about servicing our students, and this, this proposed position does the same thing. We can see, and, and what our information services department has faced post-COVID, with the amount of, Mike, I'll concur with you, what you had said about the things that we offer students. When we look at, at the programs, the software programs that we offer students, and the number of those that have increased post-COVID, to be able to support our students takes time and takes, takes the manpower to be able to do it. We had not only programs that helped to enhance instruction, but also to supplement instruction, also a presentation for students, a number of different things that have been added post-COVID, along with state mandates with EdLaw 2D to make sure that we're protecting our students' privacy. But in doing so, we have to make sure that we have the correct people in the correct places to be able to not only support the programs that are going out and being pushed out into the classrooms, the teachers and the students, but also that we have the knowledge base to be able to do that.
Yeah, just to speak to that, there was roughly, in 2020, we did go to a one-device-per-student model, which resulted in a hundred and fifty percent increase in hardware that we had in the district, as well as, Michelle just mentioned, a significant increase in the supported software platforms that we deliver to curriculum. So this position's really being requested to, to support that post-pandemic landscape.
Can you give us, especially, you know, like, what does this position do, and why, I mean, explain it a little more, like, I know what a microtech, microcomputer technical support specialist does, but from, you know, a day-to-day basis, if you can give the board a flavor for this kind of expertise, because it's a, not the highest level or whatever else, but it's a next-level-up position, and it does something differently than just repair computers. So if you could expand on that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Correct. This, this position's going to be augmenting the existing microcomputer tech support specialists we have and maintaining the Google Workspace infrastructure, maintaining that, an extra person to help when we have manpower issues due to vacations or people being called in sick. It's, it's really to supplement the amount of work that those positions have right now. And with a hundred and fifty percent increase in hardware managing that backend infrastructure is becoming incredibly more complex with the amount of devices that we have.
Give us, give an example, though, of what that means.
Let me, let me go back a little bit, and maybe that can spark some memory. Let's go back to March of 2020. Let's go back to taking, taking our district into a one-to-one scenario where each student then needed to have their own Chromebook, and each teacher had to maneuver the method that they were going to present information to their students instructionally. Our teachers did a fabulous job, and the, the, not only the programs that we offered them to be able to do that, but also the support that we gave them through our technology mentor, mentors, was pivotal in that. But instruction will not go backwards from that point. Our, our teachers continued to enhance and build on what they did during that time, and in addition, we continue to support that, but we're also faced with some different mandates. Let me give you one. For instance, YouTube is no longer something that's allowed to be used in schools. So instead of that, we need to find other ways that if teachers were using those for instructional purposes, that we can provide them a platform to be able to get that, those, those videos, even if they're for, to support reading, those videos out to their students. So how are we going to do that? Everything that we do has to have a way to be assigned. It doesn't just, we don't just, we don't just, and you can be more tactical with it, but we don't just shoot it out to every student in the district. Everything is attached to a student ID and a student name and a teacher ID and a teacher name that goes out to different places throughout the district. So there's a specialized knowledge base that has to go with that.
Another great need that this position, I'm hoping to be able to include in the district, is a more comprehensive approach on cybersecurity and keeping our district safer, having another individual in the department that can focus on cybersecurity specifically, and just more delegation of tasks and responsibilities, you know, between an additional person. So there, obviously, we want to bring more security and awareness inside our department and have eyes on different parts of our network, at different parts of what the network is doing as far as making sure it's always up for our students, and this is really, would be a significant help to that.
And protecting, that's, that's protecting instruction is basically what that's doing. If, if something were to happen, it could, you know, obviously, we've all, we've, we've heard of the cyber attacks, but we don't want them to be able to bring down instruction here in the district. So we have to be able to, we have to be able to monitor that, know what we're looking for, and then be able to protect the district. In addition to that, I'm just thinking, EdLaw 2D. I mentioned that earlier, but EdLaw 2D, if you think back to years ago, I mean, how many of us get those privacy letters that say that our data has potentially been breached through Target or, you know, some other place that had our information? As a district, we are bound to follow the regulations of EdLaw 2D here in New York State, which basically says that we will not give student data to anybody that has not signed off that they will follow New York State and our, as a district, parameters to protect our students' information. So again, every one of those programs, you can probably think back to the programs that your son or daughter brings home and uses at home from the district, but every one of those has to be approved, reviewed, and protected, you know, protected, navigated here in the district to make, make sure that we're protecting our students.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that they understood the difference between a repair technician, someone that's, you know, fixing, if someone drops a laptop and is fixing that, as opposed to this position, which is higher level, behind-the-scenes, doing much different things. So, thank you. Any other questions on that one?
All of those requests that we just reviewed with you have been added to our draft budget. So for whatever positions fall within the parts of the budget that we're presenting tonight, you will see that those positions have been added. Again, we are not final on anything, on the staffing, on the numbers we're presenting tonight, but they are in this draft. So I'm going to invite myself to not speak so much tonight and have some of my friends do a little bit of the talking. Dr. Kupel, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Miller will be joining me in presenting the draft instructional portion of the budget. As you know, the instructional portion of our budget is our largest portion of the budget. Year to year, it's typically seventy-five percent of our budget, and that is what we're going to present tonight. All of the numbers are in draft form. It is still a work in progress until mid-April when we, you know, when the board approves a final budget. We will also be, at the end, reviewing the BOSI's budget, but parts of the BOSI's budget will be reviewed tonight just as part of our instructional budget, too. So on the salary end, every salary code that's in here is contractually negotiated adjustments that need to be made. Anything that strays from those contractual percentages is a result of what we've just discussed, the staffing changes. So instead of them reiterating on every line that increases, every salary line that increases, that it was a contractual obligation, I'm just setting that forth now so we don't have to hear that over and over again. So with that being said, we will really just walk you through the increases tonight, as we normally do, with the budget codes that have changed, and in each area, we will just kind of give an overview of what has impacted the change in those budget codes. So I will turn it over to Dr. Kupel.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. So I will try to avoid redundancy, as Ms. Phillips said, and now I'll start off in that first section, 2010, Curriculum Development and Supervision. Anything that I do skip over, as Ms. Phillips said, is our contractual increases. Do feel free to stop me if you do have questions about any of those that I skip over. So the first one, 2010-151, teacher salary for curriculum writing. It's about a, just under three percent increase, and that's based on a couple of things, current usage and where we're at, but additionally, certainly more teachers being interested in curriculum writing, especially since the pandemic has, in, in a rear-view mirror a little bit. Secondary materials and supplies, 2010-500, and also 2010-502, elementary materials and supplies, both five-hundred-dollar increases, and those are really increases to cover the supply-chain cost increases that we've discussed at previous work sessions. Total increase there is three point nine-four percent, and ninety-seven percent of the increase is related directly to the contractual salary increases. 2020, supervision, regular schools. The first one I'll call your attention to is 2020-400, contractual expenses, small increase there of forty dollars, but that's increased based on the submission of the department. You'll see the next line, 2020-401, contractual expenditures for security. That's just about a twenty-seven percent increase. That's the addition of the SRO liaison program that I know Ms. Phillips and others spoke about in terms of safety and security a few board, but, or board meetings ago. Additionally, there's increase in off-duty security rate and the usage, along with an increase in the SRO contract costs. So I know that was covered in previous meetings. And then about a seven-hundred-dollar increase in 2020-500, materials and supplies, increases once again there to cover the supply-chain costs. Those are then allotted and divided per the LASSA contract. Fifty-six percent of the total five-point-eight-five percent increase in this area is related directly to the contractual expenses, where forty-four percent are related to those security enhancements and increased costs with some of the security. 2020, supervision, pupil personnel. That full increase there of three-point-three-four percent is related to contractual salary increases. Any questions thus far?
2040 is one of two budget areas that we attribute to our community education program. The small increase here this year is for the staffing that we have, so contractual increases there. And on the revenue side, the revenue that the community ed program brings in covers that increase. 2060-490, research, planning, and evaluation. We just have BOSI's expenditures in this area. We just have BOCES expenditures in this area. The BOCES expenses here are for Community Schools Coser, which is for interpreting and translation services, both for student, students or parents with hearing needs, but then also for students and parents that have, that speak different languages. We also, in this Coser, have our health and safety staff, our AED program management, some of our financial requirements, like a GASB 45 valuations, our IRU and BOCES Financial and Legislation Service, our safety consultant, Elteris, and our school physician. So our increases here are due to increases in our interpreting and translation service needs, and then also anticipated small increase for our shared medical director contract.
2070 In-Service Training. You'll see 2070-490, BOCES Services, $71,000, $72,000 increase. From that line, we have our instructional resource team. We utilize BOCES teachers in math, ELA, science, PE, social studies, to really work with our teachers and train them, update them with the new standards, provide PD, I-DAB, professional development workshops and trainings. Those are back in effect a little bit more than they have been in the past. Those increases overall is due to the increase in the Curriculum and Staff Development Itinerant Days and the increase in funds for professional development budget. And then that 22.6% that total is, that total for that percentage is related to the increase in those BOCES services there. 2110 Teaching Regular School. That first line, 2110-120, I think Dr. Marchioli and Dr. Velli already discussed, the increase beyond the contractual there are the additional K6 positions and mass specialists that were outlined. 2110-140, that's a decent increase there of 46%. Those are our substitute teachers. It's based on current usage, and really, the budget there is reflecting the current usage and the amount of subs that we are, the amount of pay that we're utilizing for the subs, whether it's actual subs or paying our teachers for coverage. 2110-180, oh, hold on, that might be 160, sorry, non-instructional salaries. That's, that is contractual, but it's adjusted for the current year and then also for going forward, so this current school year because that's the last salary increases. 2110-432, Contractual Expenses Music. You'll see a $6,000 increase there. That's to cover the supply chain costs. 2110-430, Tuition for Charter Schools. It's a 14% increase, almost 15%. It's based on current enrollment and tuition. We have quite a few students who are still going the charter school route, and that tuition, in some cases, can be, can be costly. And then I'm going to lump 2110, the last three there, 480 for K6, 712 and District Wide. Those increases, albeit slight, 1.42%, 1% and certainly no change, reflect state aid, textbook aid levels, and those are offset, as Ms. Phillips started the meeting with, by state aid. Oh, that's still me there. Make sure I give you the right one. 2110-490, it's a 10.3% increase. Our alternative learning programs that we send to BOCES, we do send a decent amount of students to BOCES, student enrichment programs, homeschool monitoring and support. Our homeschool will have a census and projected enrollment presentation coming up at a future board meeting, but the number of students we have homeschooling is about 120, so that has gone up. We have science kits. Costs of science kits have increased, and then we have additional kits due to state-mandated science investigations in grades five and eight. So the increase here is really attributed to the science kit pricing and then alternative learning program price increases. 2110-490, there's a slight decrease of about 5% in the parochial and private textbooks. That's due to enrollment and a drop in enrollment. And then I'll lump these, these next few together. So 2110-505, that's Project Lead the Way for Materials and Supplies. 2110-530, Art. 2110-535. 2110-538. And then 2110-557, so that's Project Lead the Way, Art, PE, Music and Health. Those increases are, as submitted by the department, the request that they've had in large part, they're due to supply chain costs and/or in some cases, you know, budgets have been stagnant for some of those departments for some time to then adjust based on those additional costs. The overall increase there, 5.6% for this line, 93% are contractual obligations, 3.5% is an increase due to BOCES services, and the remaining 3.5% are the requests from the departments based to supply cost increases. 2110 Fit Program, Formally Leaves and Bounds. You'll see there's no changes proposed at this time. 2110, The Alternative School Programming. There's a $200 increase in line 2110-500 for Materials and Supplies, just as an increase submitted by the department. Essentially, besides that $200, the full increase in this area here is related to contractual salary increases. And then the last two before I turn it over, 2110 Enrichment Program, no changes proposed to the budget, and then 2110, the High School, the Academy Programs and the expenses that go along with, there are no changes at this time for the, for the budget proposed. Turn it over to, I believe, Mr. Armstrong.
Yep. 2250-150, Instructional Salaries for Home Teaching. Oops, sorry about that. I'll repeat that. 2250-150, Instructional Salaries for Home Teaching. Thank you, Kevin. Largely, the increase I'm projecting there, some of it is an increase in demand, but the state mandated a change next year where the minimum amount will be doubled for elementary students from five to 10 hours per week as a minimum amount for home instruction, approved home instruction. And for secondary, it goes up from 10 hours to 15 hours per week. So those are pretty substantial increases in mandated hours per week. So we're, I think we're doing a good job. Aaron's taken a lot of leadership, and Andy Krasmin's helped out, too, with trying to be careful about how we allocate that service, but overall, it's mainly due to the state saying we have to provide more hours. So hopefully that'll, hopefully that'll cover any increase. Instructional salaries, the next item, 2250-151. It includes, of course, the proposed CSC Chair position. That's mainly, accounts for the increase, the increase beyond contractual amounts. This one, non-instructional, the next one up, Non-Instructional Salary for Teacher Aides, 2250-160. It's a combination of an, you know, the increased contract amount, but moreover, it's related to a budget adjustment to kind of catch up to the reality of what happened after COVID. We are up certainly in numbers of aides that we're using. There's no doubt about it, primarily at the elementary level, to help us out with keeping kids as much as possible in regular classroom settings or in our schools, which is a primary need. But a lot of it has to do with, with behavior and safety issues, as well as some medical issues for monitoring. But it's, I don't know what to say. We keep, we want to manage it, and I think we can do a better job on it, but the demand always seems to be there from, especially our elementary buildings. Next few items are flat. Let me look down here. Little bit of down to OT, 2250-400, a small decrease. We seem to be getting a little bit better handle on numbers for our OT services in speech improvement, or excuse me, Skill Builders Services. We've been, so in that regard, a slight adjustment down. On the other hand, expense-wise, unfortunately, physical therapy is in very strong demand. And again, I know this is mostly at the elementary level. The comment from one of my physical therapists I've worked with for many, many years is that when, when the phys ed teacher calls her to come in and screen a child, she's just amazed at some needs physically with gross motor balance and coordination skills for some of our younger children. So it's, it's resulted in certainly increased levels of service to try to get kids to, you know, so they can access school and be functional. See, moving down to tuition, public schools. Projecting, we, we put that in there, it's a contract. If we need to have one of our students with an IEP attend another public school, could be a neighboring district, or even sometimes we've sent kids to School 84 in Buffalo for specialized needs. We, we haven't had to use that lately, so I reduced it just a little bit, and we'll see. You just never know. Sometimes that comes up where you have to, to meet a child's needs, you have to use another district services as opposed to our own or BOCES. So let me see here. I better enlarge this, my eyes are getting tired. Let me see here. On pubs is the same tuition. Oh, this one. Looking at some numbers from, for tuition, and this, this largely reflects our costs for students that are placed in specialized programs. I call them private day schools. They're, they're in the area run by agencies. That number, bed stay to bed stay, so from bed stay in '22, in October of '22 to October of this year, we went up by about 16%. That means we went from 43 children that were placed in those schools to 50. And in, I don't know, depends upon how you look at it financially. Unfortunately, since I did the budget, we're up another five. So we're at about 55 students placed. When I started this job, dating myself many years ago, though, we were, I would get worried if we had 25 children in agency schools. So a lot of great services provided, but these are mainly, especially recently, are for significant behavioral, social, emotional, mental health needs. It also includes a child for the first time ever that I placed out of state at a residential school at significant cost. So it's a little different world out there lately, but we're, our kids are getting good service, it's just that it's costly. See, tuition, I covered that one. BOCES Services, slight increase in my world, not, not too bad in terms of being able to kind of hold with the number of mainly the 611 or 811 classrooms that we have projected this year. Pretty stable relatively, down a lot of its, a lot of the increases because we're down a little bit in terms of numbers, but the cost for BOCES, of course, you know, creep up because of their contractual costs as well. So overall, in that, in that category, that 2250, the majority of it is an increase attributed to the salary code changes, contractual salary increases, the, the new position, as well as a budget adjustment for current aid staffing levels to reflect the reality, and of course, the tuition I just talked about. So that pretty much summarizes that whole area. Then the next one is for, well, it's just, it's flat with the, the cost, the way they split out for teachers that are considered resource room teachers, that's contractual. Trying to think, Andy, is it back to you for DLL? Yeah. I'm sorry, did you folks have any questions? I'm sorry. You good?
Thanks, John. So yes, back to me. 2259, Programs for English Language Learners. We did talk about this, the proposed additional FTE for an ENL teacher, for a potential ENL teacher, if we continue to see our student, the number of Ls that we have increase, as I mentioned earlier. We have 21 additional English language learners since September, 76 students in total receiving services. And just for a point of reference, we have about 19 languages that our students do speak, and some that I've never heard of, but I wrote them down today, it was interesting. 2259-490, BOCES Services. Is that there was, I'm sorry, 2259-150 was an increase in about $53,000. 2259-490, a decrease of $202,000, as I talked about earlier. That's what we budgeted with BOCES in the past for the need for additional ENL services in the form of a, a teacher from BOCES. So we are eliminating that going forward. So in total, you'll see about $150,000 decrease in this area of the budget. 2280-490, BOCES Services in Terms of Occupational Education. You'll see a 21% increase here. This is based on the current school year's numbers. It's a year behind, so as of January of 2023, the number of students receiving Harkness Services, if you will, or in some cases, Powder, has gone from last year, 170, to this year, 198. I will say 198 is, is more typical of where we've been, and I think coming out of the pandemic, students are once again going for the CTE services, and it's about $9,500 per, per student. So for this part of the budget, that additional, the full increase is due to the CTE enrollment and the increase from 2021, 22 to this current school year. I think I turn it over to maybe Ms. Phillips?
The continuing ed code has no changes. This is the second budget code of the two budget codes that we use for our community ed program, and there's nothing to discuss.
Pause there, make sure I can. 2330 Summer School, no changes proposed to this budget. This budget, 2330 Summer Music Program, once again, no changes proposed to this budget area as well. 2610 School Library. You look at 2610-460, slight decrease, about 3.25%, just reflects, it's ADEABLE library books, reflects state aid, library aid levels, and those expenses are offset by aid. 2610-490, BOCES Services, you'll see a $38,000 increase. That's through a program that is called Destiny, Destiny, which our librarians and library media specialists use. It's a data, database system implemented this current year. It's a library management system which allows for them to have certain efficiencies and support above and beyond as they're managing the various databases between the seven schools, managing inventories, managing things of that nature. Those funds are pulled partly from IS and then partly, and split partly with the library department. And then there is 2610-500, about a $4,000 increase there, and that's really to cover the supply chain costs. Overall, in this area of the budget, it's a 6.8% increase. And then 2610-500, Video Library, and 2610-500 Audio Visual. In both of those areas, there are no changes proposed to this budget. I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller.
2630-150, 160 and 161 are contractual. 2630-162 is the requested full-time NTSS position. 2630-201, $3,000 increase is due to, basically, the increase is due to industry-wide supply chain issues that we've talked about. 2630-220, this 25% increase is requested to replace student devices that have reached end of life, and also to replace outdated display classroom technology, which currently are ceiling mounted projectors and in-rot boards, and they're going to be replaced with 75-inch true touch, touchscreen panels. 2630-400, again, this is attributed to software cost increases. These increases basically are more or less typical supply, typical increase with your, your software subscriptions. These are needed to maintain the day-to-day operations of district's information services network. 2630-460, this 25% reduction is due to the efforts of consolidation of software by the curriculum and district tech mentors. We've worked closely with IRU and BOCES to utilize their software services that have grown since the pandemic, and in, so we're eligible for state aid to reduce total cost of ownership to district curriculum, software solutions. 501, this nominal increase again is due to supply chain increases in costs. 2630-490, that is our BOCES software subscriptions. Those costs are also basically due to increased subscription costs from the vendors. And that was it. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions?
Twenty-eight, oh five, attendance services, you'll see there's a $250 increase on twenty-eight, oh five, five hundred, materials and supplies, that's as submitted by the department. Overall, 97% of the increase here in this area of the budget is related to contractual salary increases. Twenty-eight, ten, guidance services, 100% of the increases there of the total, so 3.8% are related to contractual salary increases. And then health services, twenty-eight, fifteen, CA, twenty-eight, fifteen, four hundred, contractual expenses, about a $980 increase there as submitted by the department, and then twenty-eight, fifteen, five hundred, materials and supplies, about a $300 increase there, once again, as submitted by the department. 98% of the increase in this area is related directly to contractual salary increases. I think I turn it back over to Mr. Armstrong.
He only took me while he finally recovered. Psychological services, twenty-eight, twenty, one fifty, referring to our school psychologists in that whole area, along with some contractual materials and supplies, it's pretty much all related to the contractual salary increase, everything else is flat. Moving down to the twenty-eight, twenty-five for social work services, again, with a slight decrease in counseling services needed for students attending BOCs, it's all related to contractual salary increases.
All right, just two areas left of the instructional portion of the budget, we have the co-curricular activities and the inner scholastic athletics. So on the co-curricular activities, this is where all of those Schedule D changes that we discussed earlier in staffing are reflected, and then the equipment contractual and supply money is attributed to the music department and the marching band. So on the equipment end, there is a 48, $48,500 increase requested by the department for the purchase of equipment for their program. In the contractual expenses, we've increased that line by 10% to cover supply chain cost increases, and the $5,700 increase in the materials and supplies is as requested by the department. So in this budget section, 35% of the increase is related to contractual salary increases and those Schedule D changes we discussed, and then the remainder is due to increased supply costs and request of the department. On the athletic end, twenty-eight, fifty-five, the increased positions that we discussed earlier are included here, along with some estimated Schedule D changes in terms of the actual salaries of the levels. The equipment code is a just under $14,000 increase, and that is as requested by the department. They itemize what equipment they're needing for the following year for various sports teams, and this was their request for an increase. On the contractual expenses, 7% of the increase that is there is to cover supply chain cost increases, and then also Section Six settled their contract with the officials and referees, so 3% of this increase is to cover the increases in that contract settlement that we anticipate. The BOCs services end, in this code, it is our state athletics association and local ECIC dues, our concussion testing for our students, and our huddle coaching software. The increases here are attributed to dues increases for the following year. And on the materials and supplies, we've estimated a 10% increase just to cover supply chain increases. So overall, in this section, a 9% increase, about half of that is related to the salary stipend changes and the additional positions, and then the remainder is due to program needs and requests and supply chain cost increases. So overall, for this entire portion of the budget, we're looking at just over $4 million budget to budget increase, which is just under 6.5%, being that this is the largest portion of our budget, that is also where we're going to see the largest increase, right? So at this point, we're still working through these numbers, I keep reiterating that, but this is where we're at at this point. Does anyone have any questions on the actual instructional portion? All right. So one more quick thing is the BOCs budget, and we will just discuss the codes that we did not already review as part of everyone's discussion already. So the first line is ten, ten, four ninety, this is the Board of Education's BOCs budget code, out of this code, we have our policy and administrative manuals and the policy administrative updates. It also includes our employee handbook and the cost of code of conduct review. So the difference for 22, 23 is having a code of conduct review in 23, 24. Thirteen, ten, four ninety is the business office or financial BOCs code, here is where we have our internal claims auditor who audits the district's claims on the board's behalf, and the increase is just due to the increase in their service fee for next year. Fourteen, twenty, four ninety is the legal code, so we contract with BOCs for labor relation services and public relation services. The increase here is attributed to a restructure of the BOCs cosers and services for their communications program, and then we also added some additional funds for student suspension hearings based on our current use. Fourteen, thirty, four ninety, an increase of just over $5,500 in this code, we pay for our certification service, Red Rover, which is our absence management system for all of our staff, and the increase is due to license increases with the attendance subcalling system. Sixteen, seventy, four ninety is where we budget for some printing and graphic, graphic design services that we use as needed through BOCs, and there's no change in that budget code. Sixteen, eighty, four ninety is quite an active code, it is where basically all of our student operation systems fall under, so e-school, Web Edge, RTIM, test scoring, data warehouse, WinCap, our budget mailer, Q Ware, which does our facilities work orders, our applicant tracking for our job vacancies, our My Learning Plan, IEP Direct, our, all of our servers, our website, our internet service, I could go on and on, literally, there's a few more sentences in this. So we actually see a decrease here, which is surprising, of about $27,000. We did have increases attributed to rising costs of existing softwares, licenses, renewal and support fees, but that was offset by a decrease. Eric Miller has put forth the effort to host our WinCap, which is our financial and personnel and purchasing system that we use, to host that software on a in-house server as opposed through, to, with BOCs, and so we've, we've achieved some significant savings there from his efforts. And he has also, based on purchases in his budget code for equipment, moved some of his equipment purchasing money out of the BOCs code and into his equipment purchasing budget code. So where I think his section of the budget was slated to increase about $200,000, some of that is offset by this budget code and the decreases he's made in his budget. Nineteen, eighty-one, four ninety-one is where we pay for all of our BOCs administrative capital and rental fees, it's basically the cost of being able to do business with BOCs, and just a small $300 increase there. And then I'm going to skip down, we've reviewed the rest of these codes except for the last one, fifty-five, ten, four ninety, which is bus driver training, which we use as needed. So overall, BOCs budget to budget is $465,000 increase, which is 5%. And I would like to note that BOCs services are aidable, that is why we try to do as much business as possible with BOCs in terms of, you know, purchasing softwares that we could just directly purchase just as easily, and other student support services, if it's able to be part of a BOCs coaster, they're very helpful in helping us administrate all of those programs, but we also, in the following year, get aid based on this year's expenses. So everything we can spend with BOCs, we will at least get a portion of that back in state aid the following year. So it's something, if something's BOCs aidable, we're more likely to want to do it, just because we know that it's really going to be dramatically offset the cost.
And I always want to thank you all for doing that, because I think it's so important to get those, even if it's just a small amount, you know, just to make sure we're maximizing on anything we can, including, you know, when it's appropriate to not use BOCs by housing it ourselves, right? If we can do that, the more we can do that, the more we see all the pieces working together, the more, as John said earlier, the opportunity cost, right? I mean, if we can do all of this stuff, think about what we can do in the future if we just get all these pieces right. So I appreciate all of you for working together cross-functionally to do this.
Thanks. So if there's no questions on what we've presented tonight, the next month and a half will really just be fine-tuning our budget, shoring up some estimates on some of our expenditures, and also waiting on that state budget to be passed so we can finalize the revenue side of the budget. We have another work session on April 10th, so hopefully the state budget will have been passed by then, because that's just right after their deadline, and at that point, we will ideally be presenting to you a draft overall budget, and then from there, at the board meeting on, the regular board meeting would be when you would be accepting the full budget, and that would be what would go to the voters in May.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, thank you, everyone else. All right, 5.0 is an executive session to discuss the Lancaster Central Teachers Association negotiation, so for all intents and purposes, that ends our meeting tonight. Before we adjourn, just, our next meetings are March 13th, 2023, that's at 7:00 PM, that's a regular session right here in the Williams Street School building. And then, as Ms. Phillips mentioned, April 10th, 2023, at 6:30 here at the Williams Street School for that budget work session. Do I have a motion to go into an executive session?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.